Good morning. This is Monday, January 31st. It's 10:00 AM in the City Council meeting for the work session today. And the first item on here is new employees, Terry Wilcox.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Today, we have a group of wonderful new employees to introduce. When I call the department's name, I'd like the department head to come up pretty quickly so that you can introduce your employee. Finance?
Good morning. We are very excited to have Eric Haynes join the city team and Finance in particular as this customer service technician supervisor. He's been here almost a month and he is doing a great job, learning a lot, and we're excited to use his expertise as a CPA in the department in the upcoming years. So, Eric Haynes, do you want to say a few words?
Eric, if you would come up here to the mic. Makes it easier for us to...
Sorry, that's the problem of going first, I guess. No, I just wanted to thank everybody for the welcome and the introduction, and I'm happy to be part of the Finance team and the city organization as a whole.
Thank you and welcome. I've already had a chance to pick on him a little, so...
All right, Police Department?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I have the pleasure today of introducing Jessica Flores. Jessica Flores is taking a position in our Records Division. I'd have to say probably one of the brightest things about Jessica is that, as you can see, she just kind of has this positive aura about her, and that's something that, you know, all through her interview process, we really, really discovered, and it's infectious. So with that, I'll have her come up and say a few things.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here. It was nice meeting out everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Judge Greenacre?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good morning. I'm pleased this morning to welcome Karina Lanusa as our new Court Administrator. Karina began in November at a time which I would say very difficult transition that the court was making, but she stepped in and she stepped up and she has the ship moving in the right direction. I've noticed that she's also training Donna Hawken, whom you met last week. She's the Deputy Court Clerk, and both of them are just excellent with computers. They know far more than I do in that area, and I could tell you that they're doing an excellent job of helping us get the best out of the system that we're using now. There's two things that I think are important at the court, and Karina is continuing on in this. The first one is customer service. We see a lot of people that come to the window from time to time. We answer a lot of telephone calls, and it's very important that we meet the needs of those customers so that they can resolve their cases quickly and efficiently and get accurate information. And we've prided ourselves in doing that, and Karina is continuing that transition. The other thing that I think is important is we are looking at some changes going into the future in terms of digitizing the court, and Karina and I are on the same page in making those efforts. So I think she's going to be a great addition to the city of Montrose and to the Montrose Municipal Court going forward. So I introduce to you Karina Lanusa, and I'll let her tell you her story.
Thank you all for having me today. I'm Karina Lanusa. I am our new Court Administrator, and I'm very thankful for the position as our Court Administrator. The judge takes a lot of pride in the fact that I interned here throughout high school with Melissa Hall, Blaine Hall's wife, and she taught me so much, which interested me in pursuing a career here. And, you know, I got it, and I'm very thankful for that. I am the first generation in my family to actually get a college degree in criminal justice, and I take a lot of pride in that. It was a lot of hard work, and I have a six-month-old daughter, you know, so she takes up a lot of my time, but I also put in a lot here. So I'm very thankful for Judge Greenacre for having me and all you guys who were kind enough to let me, you know, show what I have.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
You'll have your hands full with a daughter and a judge to look after.
OBT?
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I am pleased to introduce Katie Schrader to our OBT team. Katie takes over for our Community Events Coordinator position, and she has a lot of great experience that has been put to the test already. We are excited to have her on our team, and she's just fitting in very well. Here is Katie.
Hello, everyone. As Lisa said, I'm Katie Schrader. I'm the Community Events Coordinator with the Business and Tourism. I am so grateful to have this position. I've always wanted to be of service to a city and the community, so I'm really excited to get to work and help, you know, put on these events. So thank you for having me.
Thank you and welcome.
Another infectious smile. I love it.
Engineering?
Morning, Council. Happy to introduce Matt Toms here. He is our replacement for Steven Taylor as our Stormwater Inspector. So that position helps us keep the river clean and administer our stormwater permit with the state. So I'll let him, and fresh out of CMU, so keeping it local.
Thank you. I'm also very happy to be here. Look forward to being part of this team, and thanks a lot for the opportunity. Looking forward to it.
Thank you and welcome. Must be tough around here. I see two of you walking around with arms and those slams. Competition's getting worse. Good.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for us?
Not at all. Thank you very much, Terry.
Great.
My question is between Lisa and Matt, who won the arm wrestling contest?
Heard the city manager was rough here, but I didn't realize it was that bad. Thank you. The next item this morning is discussion item. Item A, Haven House CDBG Grant Resolution.
And Brusada will be presenting today. Kendall's out of the office, so thank you, Brusada.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning. So yeah, like, she said Kendall is still feeling under the weather and still recovering, so I'll be presenting on his behalf. So I come before you today to discuss a resolution to file a Community Development Block Grant CDBG application in the amount of $600,000 with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, on behalf of Haven House, Inc. So, Alethah-based, Haven House offers guidance, counseling, life skills training, and other services to help homeless families break the cycle of homelessness and dependency. In addition to providing safe and stable housing, Haven House offers a career development program to help participants become employable, stay employed, and pursue a career that will provide a living wage. They also provide a child development program for the school-aged children that keeps the kids in school and helps them raise their academic performance and improve behavior and values. And they also have an early childhood education program that prepares children for success in school. Haven House's services are aimed at addressing critical issues in our region, housing for low-income and homeless individuals, underachieving school-aged children of the homeless, and early childhood education scarcity. Haven House owns property and seeks to expand its current facility at 80, sorry, 4806 North River Road, Alethah, Colorado, 81425, in order to continue providing assistance to the Montrose community and surrounding region. Haven House plans to construct a two-story, 9,200-square-foot addition to its current building. The first floor will provide space for an early childhood education center, office space, and create four new transitional housing units for individuals and families seeking to end homelessness. The second floor will consist of eight low-income apartment units for participants who have graduated from Haven House's program. All living units will have access to common areas in the main facility, including a commercial kitchen, refrigeration space, a library, laundry, and a visitation playroom. The expansion will enable the Early Childhood Education Center to accommodate up to 35 pre-kindure children while continuing to provide a forum for participants to become early childhood educators. Approximately 85% of clients served by Haven House are from Montrose and Delta Counties. Since 2016, Haven House has housed 450 people, seen 151 participants graduate to self-sustaining lifestyles, and provided 65,000 nights of shelter to the homeless population. The total project cost is estimated at $3.1 million. Matching funds will be met through funding requests through the Colorado Housing and Financing Authority, CHFA, the Colorado Division of Housing, Private Foundations, Fundraising, and Haven House's Building Fund. So the city has no cash obligation to this project. However, the city will contribute staff time for grant administration. In order to be eligible for CDBG, an applicant's project must meet the Federal U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirement of having 51% to low-to-moderate income beneficiaries. Currently, 95% of Haven House's clients are of low-to-moderate income means. The city of Montrose regularly partners with our city's nonprofit organizations to sponsor and administer Community Development Block Grants, CDBG projects, which strengthen our community and serve vulnerable populations. If not for the CDBG program and the support of the city, these projects may be delayed or never pursued. As the fiscal sponsor, the city of Montrose commits to assisting with the environmental review, ensuring procurement aligns with CDBG requirements, submitting quarterly, annual, and final reports, and serving as a liaison to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Recent CDBG grants have been secured for the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club, Center for Mental Health, and the Maslow Academy. The city of Montrose and Haven House shall enter into an agreement for the provision of CDBG funding to assist with construction costs of the project. Haven House has notified DOLA, the Montrose County, and the Town of Alethah of its intent to apply for funding through the city of Montrose. No concerns or objections have been made. The resolution, for your consideration, states, "If the grant is awarded, the City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to execute the grant contract with DOLA and city staff to act in connection with the CDBG grant application, follow CDBG regulations and DOLA requirements, and to provide such additional information as may be required by DOLA." The resolution will come before you on Tuesday, February 15, 2022. A public hearing will be part of the regular council meeting to gather citizen input. And I know on the resolution, there is a typo in the resolution before you in the second-to-last whereas. It says CBDG, so it should be CDBG, and this will be resolved in the final resolution. Additionally, the final resolutions will identify the organization as Haven House of Montrose, Inc., doing business as Haven House. Thank you for your expedited consideration of this project. And Larry Frodrickson with Haven House is with us virtually to answer any questions that you may have about the project and its benefits.
All right, thank you, Bree. Any questions?
That explanation answered some of my questions. I know it's great when the city can act as the fiscal sponsor. Is it, clearly, it's allowed for us to sponsor an organization or a project that's outside the city limits, but is that a little unusual? I mean, is it?
So it is allowable to do that, and we have supported Haven House in the past, just not through a CDBG, because this project's been in the works for several years trying to get all the nuts and bolts of it put together. We can't think of any others that were outside the city limits for CDBG purposes, but the important thing is that they're serving an LMI population, and they qualify because they're over that 51%. And DOLA's been in communication with Kendall and Larry and that group. We, with council support, several years ago, supported Haven House when they were transitioning and having issues and almost had to close their doors, maybe feels like seven years ago now. We helped with their lease payments at the time for maybe almost a year, and then we helped, council went and toured the facility a few different times, and we helped them kind of get back on track and help with their organizational structure. So we have a long history of supporting Haven House in our community, and it's really important for people out there who are wondering, why is the city getting involved in this entity that's in Alethah? We've talked every year in our budget message to the community about partnering with our nonprofits to help make great things happen. There's a little bit of a selfish piece to that coming from the city. If Haven House were to go away, if All Points Transit were to go away, or many of the other nonprofits that we help were to go away, the city would be asked to pick up those services because the nonprofits in our community are providing really important services to the members of Montrose, Alethah, our entire region. And so we've just been proud to be able to partner with them and other nonprofits in the community. But we do get that question a lot. One, why would you help them when they're out of town? If Haven House wasn't there, all of their residents would be in the city of Montrose looking for places to live, and we just don't have any, and looking for shelters and looking for those types of services. And so we're proud to partner with Alethah on that.
Thank you very much. And clearly, they serve, even though the actual physical location is in Alethah, they serve, like you said, the greater community of Montrose and Delta. What a great program. That's great that we can be the fiscal sponsor for their grant application.
One of the things I'd like to point out that Bree pointed out in her presentation is that this is a pass-through, that the CBDG, Community Development Block Grants, are something we do quite regularly, but even though you might see this show up on our books, that it isn't money that the city is receiving, that this is just we're administering the grant, and we are working with our local nonprofits to help benefit our greater community.
One question I would, since we do serve some of Delta County, is Delta County or city of Delta, either one signing any letters of support for this?
Not aware of city of Delta submitting any letters of support. Maybe Larry, if Larry's online, he might be able to answer that.
I have not yet approached the Delta for such a letter of recommendation, but I certainly intend to. The Delta has supported Haven House in the past, just recently through their Health and Human Services Department with funding for our day-to-day operations.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anthony?
Yeah, I do have a question regarding the matching funds. I just want to confirm, so we're all aware, that's a $16,250,000 total cash match, that's $8,125 per year. Where do those matching funds come from?
Larry would probably be the best to answer that.
A part of the, it's quite a basket of other financing sources that we need to complete the financing of this project. Part of it will come from DOLA, the Division of Housing. Another part will come from Colorado CHAF, Colorado Housing and Finance Association. Some of it will come from foundations that, I have a list of 10 different foundations that I'm applying to to complete the financing, and part of it will come from our existing cash resources that we have set aside as a building fund. And finally, some of it will come out of fundraising activities that we're planning for 2022, 2022.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Bree. Next item is Victim Crime Act, VOCA, Grant Application. Mr. Hall?
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I come before you today to present and ask for authorization to apply for a Victims of Crime Act grant through Department of Public Safety in Colorado. The Montrose Police Department in 2021 investigated just over 32,000 incidents, and many of those incidents unfortunately include things like sexual assaults, child abuse, crimes of violence in general, all things that require a victim's advocate to be a part of, and also a victim's advocate position is something that is statutorily required for us to staff and fund through the state of Colorado. So there are grants out there that we use to help fund that position, and this particular grant, we have applied for and received funding through the federal government for the last 15 years. So in this case, we are asking for authorization to apply for a two-year VOCA grant. This grant would fund $54,000 worth of our victim's advocate position over a two-year period, so $27,000 per year, and then also for a leased vehicle that we provide our victim's advocate so that she can respond to these incidents, and that would be $11,000 over a two-year period totaling $5,500 per year. The total grant that we would be applying for in the next two years or to fund over the next two years for the vehicle and position is $65,000. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Anyone have a question?
I answered the question for you previously, Blaine.
Yeah, I might have mentioned that. So that, yeah, this grant does require a match from the city of Montrose to the tune of $16,250, which we often match that in our victim's advocates over time, so...
And this VOCA grant is something that we apply for quite regularly. This is nothing new. This is just kind of an ongoing grant program.
Nope, we've applied for this grant, yep, for the last 15 years, and this grant works in conjunction with the Vail Grant, which provides the other half of our victim's services salary, so almost 100% of her salary is paid for through grants.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is update to Municipal Code, Section 415-2, Historic Preservation. William Reese?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is a code update that we're proposing in light of the appointment of an alternate Historic Preservation Commissioner. The purpose of this is to clean up the code and clarify the role of the alternate commissioner. To be clear, this is not a modification of existing practice, but rather serves to codify the process of appointment and the alternate's duties. This code change is to Municipal Code, Section 415-2, Historic Preservation Commission, specifically subsection B. That section already reads as follows. Composition: The commission shall be composed of seven voting members, all of who have demonstrated interest in, competence with, or knowledge of preservation. As you can see in the red line version, the only change being made is the addition of the following. The council may appoint alternate Historic Preservation Commission members in the same manner as regular appointments. The alternate Historic Preservation Commission members may be called to sit on the commission and vote as a member thereof on account of the absence of any regular member. We plan to bring this amendment before you at the regular city council session for a first reading on February 15th and for a second reading on March 1st. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. That was an action that was required after we picked an alternate, I believe, for the historic commission. Update to Municipal Code, Section 6127. Matt Magliano?
6127 underage marijuana and drug paraphernalia to reflect that we've broken that apart. Since the last work session, staff of the direction of council has done some more substantive edits to the wording with intent of broadening the scope of the ordinance in light of recent law changes to state law from HB 2020-1001. Also, my understanding is Chief Hall is prepared to provide a presentation to council at council's request. Red line version appears on pages 23 through 30 of today's session packet and a clean version on pages 15 through 22. There's a revised introductory memo that appears on page 13 through 14 of today's packet, and it covers and summary the proposal as well as its rationale. The technical edits are basically all the same from the last presentation. I'm breaking this apart, or I propose to break this apart into two sections and recodify along a pattern order. One, for a listing of substantive crimes. I'll get a little closer to it. So a listing of substantive crimes, underage tobacco possession and paraphernalia is A and B respectively for cannabis, and then cannabis paraphernalia, it's A and B. So it's intended to simplify and much easier to cite and understand. Two, the definitions were internally rearranged, and they now appear in alphabetical order. And three, there's delineated penalty sections for the crimes. Before, you kind of had to hunt for them within the ordinance structure itself, and no longer have to do so, and subheadings were added to enhance readability. So that's the summary of what we did before. As the substantive edits, I'll just go through the red line and the references. I was talking about the footer red lines to the red line. So page 23, we raised the age of minority to those under age 21 from age 18 in current ordinance. That's reflective of what happened with House Bill 2020-1001, which raised the minimum age of those who could be sold or dispensed tobacco products from 18 to 21 in state law. Same page, we added the words purchase or attempt to purchase, as we may, as a home room municipality, may more stringently regulate sales. Page 23B, that verbiage was changed from the past proposal. That now includes tobacco paraphernalia as a phrase in term of art, but it draws this definition from the definition within of electronic smoking devices, and then all the items listed in the definition of drug paraphernalia, when those items are instead used to ingest, inhale, or otherwise introduce tobacco product into the body. So the, to give an example, the metal, glass, or ceramic pipes as objects defined and listed as drug paraphernalia in 6127-3 can be tobacco paraphernalia when those are used to introduce tobacco product into the body. Defining cross-reference is pretty common in state code, and it's preferable in terms of drafting convention that listing out again everything that could be used as paraphernalia across the two ordinances. And the definition also pulls in the considerations and process of analysis that the court would use for determining if something is drug paraphernalia for the tobacco paraphernalia section. That's again, intending as limiting and intending to provide considerations and analysis and standards for the judiciary in applying this, so it does not become overbroad in application. Page 24 of the proposal, the red line, there's an addition of language of exclusion here in tobacco product. That excludes those products that the FDA has approved as a tobacco use cessation product. This exclusion I found in current state law that's in Title 18, and so that's essentially word-for-word from 1813-121. It also makes sense to not cite a 19-year-old for possessing tobacco cessation gum to cease addiction to tobacco products as tobacco products. So that exclusion, I think, it just added in there as a parallel state law. E on the same page, this exclusion is in the House Bill that passed, House Bill 2020-1001. It's one of the sections of exclusion added in by that law. It's from Title 44. Retailers can employ those... Retailers can employ those older than eighteen but younger than twenty-one to engage in sales of tobacco product. So for example, your liquor store can employ a twenty-year-old clerk. And when that twenty-year-old clerk handles tobacco or other products like chewing tobacco the like, the intent is that we shouldn't criminalize or ordinance need not criminalize that clerk for handling the cigarettes or tobacco products for the purpose of furnishing those as part of their job for the sale to the end customer who's of age. Same section F, the intent of this section is to make violations of this ordinance a secondary violation for traffic vehicle stops and not a primary violation that justify on its own a pull-over of a vehicle. So what do I mean by that? I mean, the seatbelt ordinance, which is where this language came from, works a similar way, where if someone's seen without a seatbelt, that can't be a primary violation to pull over a vehicle. In the same way, if an officer observes someone that they either know is underage or suspect is underage and they see tobacco, like cigarettes on the dashboard, that won't be grounds itself to pull over the vehicle and stop it. Now, if that person runs a red light or commits another traffic violations, that would be subject to a citation and under Model Traffic Code as adopted here or the Colorado statute, that can be a stop and then they could be cited as a secondary violation. But it can't be a primary basis and sole basis to go pull over a car. This isn't, the intent of the section is to limit the scope of the ordinance further. It's already limited to acts committed in a public place, but it's also to address potential civil liberty concerns, and it's a narrowing construction for the ordinance. I wanted to address, since it came up in our last session, I am aware that our state legislature is considering the flavored vape. There is a draft bill in the legislature currently. That's draft bill, House Bill 22-1064. It was introduced to the General Assembly January fourteenth. There are some additional changes made. Predominantly, the changes, as I can tell, are to change definitions in Title forty-four as well as Title eighteen to encompass what they're calling synthetic nicotine. I don't know, and I would suggest to you that I don't think we need to follow suit. One of the reasons I don't believe we need to is we already have a very functional and good definition that covers electronic vaping devices. And the penalties for that and for tobacco products are the same. In addition to that, tobacco products as defined are also matters derived from nicotine. There's language in there that's, I think, expansive enough to cover our flavored vape cases. And I'm not seeing in the field here, when this is a court, problems in prosecution related to that. We've had the last two dockets flavored vape cases. Just giving you an idea, we had one described in evidence as Arias Mega Bubble Gum five percent and then as an electronic smoking device, and then another peach soda the week before. So we are seeing the flavored vapes, but we're not seeing bars or problems or challenges to the prosecution to date. I'll continue to monitor this bill as it progresses forward, but I want to bring that to council's attention. It did not endeavor to make any substantive edits in light of the introduced draft. Last, as to the MC 6127, page twenty-six, I did add some cross-definition here within the defined term cannabis. This is one that's actually defined in part by Colorado Constitution, Article eighteen, Section sixteen-two-F. There's, as to marijuana, but it parallels that definition. There's a cross-reference to including concentrate, which is later defined in the same section, as well as the latter line, "or the weight of any other ingredient combined with marijuana to prepare topical or oral administrations, food, drink, or other product," and the exclusion for industrial hemp. I wanted to more parallel our state constitutional definitions within Section sixteen to include the cross-reference and then the two exclusions. I think in concept, we had that in summary. We have, for example, fiber derived from mature stalks. That's essentially industrial hemp, but all the same. It's more expressly set out that way. This came about in part from my presentation in discussion with youth city council. They really, the questions I had from them relied upon this definition. There's also concerns whether or not its coverage would cover CBD oil or lotions or products. My interpretation is I don't believe our existing definition in state and our code would cover that. I think in part, the intent to, the intent for folding in cannabis concentrate to the same definition was an intent to express that, but I wanted to have a little bit more limiting language. So, and I did meet with them in part because that was, this originally, as I understand it, in 2019 was in part a youth city council initiative or went through that body. So that's why they were consulted. I think Chief Hall has some stats that the council is interested in. And I'm here to answer any questions as well.
Well, Chief's coming up. I want to say, Matt, this is much better, much more clear, and I think very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at our last work session when we were discussing this, I think Councilor Bynum asked for some stats over the last few years for our underage tobacco citations, and then I also have some juvenile marijuana data here as well, if you guys would like to hear it. And then it just went away on me. So in 2019, we cited a total of nineteen juveniles for underage tobacco possession. Many of those were health and safety violations, most likely meaning that they were SRO citing students. We actually had four of, four individuals that were cited for underage tobacco use as part of liquor investigation, so we were called to most likely an underage party and then went ahead and cited them as a result. In 2020, we had sixteen citations. All of them except for two were the health and safety violations. So once again, that was through our school resource officers. We took a big jump in 2021 and actually cited thirty-five juveniles. And I think a lot of that had to do with probably COVID and the stats in 2020 were down quite a bit because school wasn't in session. Again, most all of those had to do with our school resource officers. Not a whole lot on the cannabis front. In 2019, we cited eighteen individuals who were under the age of eighteen for possession of cannabis. Nine in 2020, again with COVID, and then in 2021, nine juveniles for underage possession of cannabis.
So when we were first looking at this ordinance, it was to provide some additional tools to our school resource officers who were being asked by the high school to help them because there wasn't really a rule that they couldn't do it. So has it been effective in providing that tool to the school? I mean, has it been effective? Do you think it's working?
I think it's working, but I think that with the addition of this, I think it will work even better. And so I did a little bit of research and kind of how the impetus of how this came about. And actually, this was something that President Biden back in 2020 signed legislation, actually December of 2019, through the FDA. And so this is actually a national thing. All states have to comply with this situation, enacting laws where retailers can no longer sell to individuals under the age of twenty-one. And some of the research actually shows actually about ninety percent of kids under the age of twenty-one, or they're not kids, they're adults at age eighteen, engage in tobacco use right around that high school age time and then post that. And so the goal was to try to take that ability away from those individuals because the research showed that most of our high school age kids know an individual who is eighteen to twenty-one or eighteen to twenty that is actually purchasing tobacco products at the retailer, retail stores. And so by taking that away, the research actually also said it's actually separating those eighteen and twenty-year-olds from the cohort of the high school kids because there's really no reason for high school kids to hang out with eighteen to twenty-year-olds anymore. So it was just some interesting reading. So I do think it's a good thing, and I do think that we should move forward with it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thanks, Bynum. Next item is Item E, Lyons and Buckley Park Irrigation System Replacement Award Recommendation. Jim Scheid.
Morning, Council. Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you. I don't believe there's any need to leave. Matt, is that okay? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
All right. Good morning. So it's finally time to bring forth a recommendation on the irrigation system in Lyons and Buckley. I feel like I've been working on this project for multiple years at this point between planning and design. And it actually is a lot more complicated than it seems. So it is an irrigation system, but Greg is showing a map here that shows where the system serves. So this is Lyons and Buckley Park and also the Paso del Arroyo area. So just for reference in that this is much more complicated than it sounds as just an irrigation system. The existing system was installed in the eighties, and it's comprised of two separate systems. And it irrigates about ten acres total, so inside it's very similar to our cerise fields, but much more complicated in just the orientation and the amount of trees. There's over a hundred trees within that area that obviously complicates how the system is installed and how it's repaired. And so over the last forty years, obviously, trees have grown into a large portion of the system. The Arroyo has shifted in areas. Electrical systems have been damaged and materials used at the time have just aged. So the system has become quite problematic and it's taken a lot of labor on our side to keep it going. And oftentimes, sections of it need to be watered manually just because the system was broken in so many ways that it took manual watering to keep water on the park. Both of the current pump houses are in the floodway of the Montrose Arroyo, and they're frequently flooded and they're at risk of falling into the Arroyo. So in 2021, this last year, we worked closely with the design team to design a new system that would utilize a single pump house and of course, out of the floodway. The size of the system and its controls would be, again, very similar to cerise. Pretty much the same system and the same pump house style would be in this park as same as cerise. Now, because of the concentration of trees and the complexity of the system, there will be an impact to trees in the park, mainly where boring is not practical. Some of the laterals are going to require trenching, and that will have an impact on some trees. And we tried to keep the system designed in a way to where that impact is on the trees that are in the most severe decline anyway. And actually, there's several that need to be removed regardless. So we will work on that as far as the in-house crews will be removing some of the trees that are going to be in the way and then some of the ones that will be most heavily impacted. And then over the next several years, our parks team will kind of focus our tree replacement in this park to replace those trees that are going to be removed. So onto bidding, we received one bid on this project, which is maybe a sign of the times in that this is a, is a good local project that I think in years past, we would have seen several bids on. And we know we advertise publicly, we advertise through the newspaper, and we even reach out to several local contractors that we know to make sure they're aware of the projects and that kind of encourage them to bid on them. And all that being said, it seemed like quite a bit of legwork upfront. We only received one bid. Thankfully, that one bid is from a well-respected general contractor that we work with on many projects. We're currently working with them on several and have a very positive experience in the past. And they're very, very good to work with when it comes to cost control, very open book, and they're a pleasure to work with, and that's Stryker and Company. So if receiving one bid isn't enough, the one bid was over our budget as well. So we did meet with Stryker a couple of weeks ago to try to work through where are discrepancies at, where was their proposal different than our estimate, and what can we do to bring this back under budget? You know, is there something we can self-perform? Is there any value engineering options, things like that? And as you've probably heard, the discrepancies, as in a lot of projects, are in material pricing and specialty work, and in this case, boring. There's quite a bit of boring in this project to keep the impact to the trees mainly to a minimum. And so, you know, last March really is when we were developing budget for this. And at that time, you know, it's strategic budgeting as far as getting quotes and estimates done and estimating inflationary costs to work that would be performed this year. And we're still under budget, or sorry, we're still over budget. So, which is frustrating. We even discussed that with Stryker and other GCs in the area of, you know, how should we budget for projects like this? How are they estimating projects like this? And it's, we're not alone in this, you know, difficult times, I guess. They're seeing a lot of issues when they're bidding a project to prices changing between then and time it's awarded, which is a very short timeframe usually. And so not only with the city, but even other owners are having this issue of where almost right away, the project is kind of set up to be over budget just based on price changes in a very short time span. So PVC pricing, for example, is one of the ones that the supplier will only hold pricing for seven days. So in that case, you know, how do you bid a project that's going to be happening in months from now? And in our case, how do we budget for a project that's going to happen next year? Becomes very difficult. In this case, for this project, we do have a local supplier that's going to hold pricing on the PVC material until February fifteenth, which is when this would be, could be awarded. And that's because they, well, we have a long relationship with the supplier and they have the material in stock. So we kind of, I think even Dave Brees has mentioned projects where he's having issues with PVC pricing, and this is the same world. So another, with this project, there is a possibility that some of the costs associated with the construction will push into 2023. Now, the project is proposed to be completed in 2022, which would use up the entire contract amount. Now, there is a case where some of that could be pushed into January, February of next year, which would make our, how much we would expend this year actually on budget or under budget. But because of the intent was to be completed this year and the contract amount would be above what we budget, I just wanted that to be open and that, and continue to award at the recommended amount, even though it may work out in the process that would actually be expended in twenty-three, which we would budget for in twenty-three. And we did come up with a couple of ideas on how the city can participate in the project to bring some costs down, such as vacuum excavating or similar construction fence, things like those small things that we can do in-house. But they didn't amount to enough to really affect the contract amount. It's things that we will do anyway. Now, we've kind of identified where we can help and bring costs down. But ultimately, in the amount of the contract, it didn't make much of an impact. With all that said, are there any questions?
We've seen this dramatic price increase across the board on a lot of other projects. So it is alarming, but there's not a lot we can do about it. This is scheduled to come before us on February fifteenth. Would it be more beneficial for us? And would it benefit the contract to expedite that to tomorrow night's meeting? Or is the fifteenth going to be okay?
I think the fifteenth is okay. We've worked that out with, mainly the PVC was the big worry and that that is one that they can't, or with other customers, aren't willing to hold that timeline. But for us, they are, and we're not planning on starting any work on this project until later in the year. We'll do some of the pump house work in the summer, but then we really won't get into doing any of the irrigation system work until in the fall. So we'll order materials February fifteenth and store them until we start work later. So because we kind of have that secured until February fifteenth for, you know, for purchasing materials, it doesn't do us much benefit to. the materials, it doesn't do as much benefit to come tomorrow.
So you've given us a lot of really good information, but I think the one question I have at the end of the day is, with only one bid and it being over budget, do we have an option to wait and rebid this next year and see if it bids out differently?
That is an option, and we, you know, if it weren't, if it weren't Stryker that had been the one bid, we probably would have recommended that we rebid this. But initially, so we know right off the bat, we're looking at an increase in material costs right up, right up front. So even if we rebid today, we would see an increase to our costs, and likely the total would be even higher. And because we didn't get any interest from other GCs, you know, or several that we reached out to, and they're too busy. So I think right now, they're not interested in more work. Our material prices are going to continue to go up. So I think this is the, this, we should probably take advantage of Stryker being a very good contractor to work with, and we know we have the lowest pricing on materials that we can foresee.
So I think rebidding it could actually backfire on us. We could actually get in a situation where materials costs have increased so much and availability of contract labor. And Stryker just recently completed a project for us boring under the river, so I think they have a pretty good idea of what materials costs are and what their subcontract labor's costs are. So I understand that they probably have a pretty good idea of what it's going to take to do this project.
I think that was a different contractor on that project, but even like the amphitheater, which was completed recently, you know, we were, we were seeing that on that project as well, that prices continued to go up, and we needed to award as early as possible to keep from seeing that next price increase. We haven't seen anything indicate the prices are going to go back down.
The other thing about that is that I think that, Jim's been presenting this to us and explaining to us, this is like putting a Band-Aid on a sucking chest wound, that the system is deteriorating so fast and is in such bad shape that prolonging this another year would probably be really detrimental to that entire green belt in our park system on that end.
Yeah. And to speak to your point probably of making sure we have competitive pricing.
Exactly. I mean, anytime you only receive one bid because people are too busy. I don't think it's an unusual question to ask, would we be better off, even with materials costs going up, rebidding this when there's more?
We definitely considered that as well, right? One bid, usually you want to look at, is it competitive? And how we, you know, in our process, we went through and compared it to our estimates we received last year from the same supplier here to see if that's the difference. Are we getting just markup on materials that contractors are not hungry right now, and they're just marketing on materials? And that's not the case. They were actually, again, very open and showing us quotes, they received multiple quotes from different suppliers and different vendors, and they do compare with what we priced last year. Now, the, the changes in the materials itself, not in markup or in, you know, overhead costs to a GC or even a sub.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
And I think in line with that, my bigger concern would be if we decided to not move forward with Stryker at this time. Well, there is no guarantee. Others might bid, Stryker might drop out, and it sounds like this project is complicated enough to where that might be what's deterring people. Are you seeing that as the deterrents?
Yes.
Is that just too much?
This is a complicated one. So yes, when they, they may have another irrigation project or a construction project in general that is simpler and probably in, in other areas may have a higher profit. They're not looking at these complicated ones here, you know? So that's why we didn't see any, any other participation. They're busy, and they're likely making more money on simpler projects in our area.
Jim, do you foresee many unknowns above and beyond what you've?
Well, there was a contingency included in this, and that is for those unknowns. And when we're boring or trenching, there's potential for unknowns. You know, we do as much due diligence as we can to, you know, get ahead of trees, existing systems, things like that, to make sure we're not going to, you know, get any issues there. But that's what the contingency is for. You know, again, boring, trenching, hopefully we don't, but you never know what, what could be under there.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jim.
I have one more question. You talked about needing to disrupt some of the trees, and you're going to focus on the ones that were old and needing to go down anyway. Are you working in any way with the Parks Advisory Committee so that they feel like they at least know what the plan is? Because if I was on the Parks Advisory Committee and I thought my role was stuff like trees, and I saw a bunch of trees go away in a city park that I didn't even know about, I'd want to be at least folded into that conversation.
I know they're aware of the project. We did mention it at one of our recent meetings as far as this was upcoming for this year. Now, we haven't gotten in much more detail with them as far as, you know, which trees or, you know, how the system's going to be laid out, but I know they're aware of the project, and we can at our next meeting go into more detail of, you know, which trees are being removed and when they're being replaced.
And why, and how you make that decision, and it isn't just because the trench needs to go here, and, you know, I just think you could do some advance, some proactive education with the Parks Advisory Committee that might help their?
Definitely.
Bringing them in.
Yeah, we can, and I think even where we replace them is strategic, again, in that some areas, we can get a drip system too, and we would, we can pull off the new system for that. Other areas, we can't. So we have to be watered by hand or self-watering system. So we kind of take that into account when we're placing new trees. And again, obviously not on top of a brand new system, but close by. So yes, we can discuss our strategies.
Yeah, I think that would be really educational.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, Jackie's well aware of that and just talked to me last week about needing to bring that up to the committee, but also doing a proactive public awareness piece on the just reforestation plan for the entire community, and he wants to roll that out altogether, not just focus on one individual project. So I know it's top of his list because he was just talking to me last week about, and that we're getting into how to water and do we have staffing and those types of things. So it'll be important throughout that process to understand that you can't just easily plant a tree, and it's going to grow. So he's thinking about all those things.
I think it's good, too, that we get out to the public the amount of work that's going to be going on in there because we do have a lot of folks using those parks. So we're going to have to be a little careful that, make sure we keep our barricades and stuff up, too.
Definitely.
All right, thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item is general city council discussion. Barbara, do you have anything today? Anything? How about staff comments? Bill? Ann? Any of you guys? Well, in that case, why don't we close the meeting for today? Thank you kindly.